One minute each, and we're going to start at the end of the table with Mr. Schmidt, who I hope can hear me this evening, because we could have gone great. Excellent. The economic slogan for Frederick County has always been work here, live here. How will you promote that? Is that a good idea? Is that a reasonable idea? And what are your plans to help business create, sustain, and grow the job market in Frederick?
I absolutely believe it's important. My family's kind of made a habit of moving closer and closer to their work, or moving their work closer and closer to them. I, for a while, when I first started my company, was working out of my house, which was the best commute ever. I woke up and walked downstairs. But I think that as we look forward, and the most important thing is making Frederick kind of an innovation center. We want people to be able to move here and have a job based here. We would need to be going out and finding businesses that are willing to bring their workforce here. We have a lot of things going for us, not just the way it looks and the character of the city, but the airport. And we have things here that companies are going to want. We have one difficult thing, which is we're in Maryland, and it is difficult to have a business in Maryland. I know this. It costs less to go right across the river, Virginia or Pennsylvania. And what we need to do, the way we need to bring them here, is we need to emphasize what we do have, that the places like Northern Virginia and Pennsylvania do. So I would be a complete advocate for that. I've dealt with that, constantly working with all my clients, and it's something I would focus on.
Very good. Thank you. Would anybody like to take 30 seconds? Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Daniels. Mr. O'Connor first, and Mr. Daniels.
The Board of Aldermen advocated for the elevation of the Department of Economic Development on the organizational chart, and our Economic Development Director, Richard Griffin, now reports directly to the mayor. We're adding a third, fourth position to that as of January 1st, a manager of economic development. I would support the creation of an economic, a business development advisory committee that could help work with our economic development department in terms of recruitment, looking at our regulations, looking at our codes, trying to figure out ways that can streamline the process for businesses to come here. This is a great city, and we have untapped potential to become even greater.
Very good. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Cliff. Live here, work here is a great concept. It's one of the smart growth concepts. You know, we are already behind the power curve, and then we send tens of thousands of people down the road every day. So first, we need to find jobs for at least a portion of those people. The second thing is, if we look at the future, we look at the numbers that are out there, the state is telling us that we're going to grow by so many numbers by 2030, but the jobs aren't keeping up with it. So we need to really get an active job recruitment program and attract those businesses to the city of Frederick. If we don't, we're going to continue sending people down the road. We're going to be a bedroom community, and all will be his houses. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Boeck.
Part of the ingredients of that is ensuring, obviously, that we have great schools, that we also have safe neighborhoods. And then, I believe that we have a great economic development department. I echo the comments that have been made earlier on that. Earlier this summer, on the Chamber of Commerce survey of the candidates, it listed out 12 points in terms of how can we help foster business development and growth for businesses and entrepreneurs here in the city. A couple of those points, phasing out the personal property tax on businesses that doesn't exist in the county or even in the state. I'm echoing Alderman O'Connor on creating a business advisory commission that can serve to look at identifying other opportunities and also working to support our FITC technology incubator system so we can grow the jobs tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? That's three of you gone on the first question. Excellent stuff. We're now over to Ms. Russell. Let's talk transportation. The Monopoly Boulevard, US 15 interchange, let's been funded with $82 million from the state. Let's remove debt from the top tier of our transportation priorities. What's next for the next four years? You can name one.
Wow. I'm sorry, I'm just having one of those moments again. $82 million is a lot of money. We're going to be allocating it into our capital improvements plan. There are a lot of improvements that are going to be required. There's still another section of Monopoly Boulevard that has yet to be completed. We'll be focusing on that. We have some, definitely, some needs for road improvements. Within the city, we've been way behind on repairs and so forth. That's all. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And we're going to take Mr. Imhoff for his 30 seconds.
30 seconds. The best thing to do, highest priority, would be on US 15 from Mater Avenue, actually from Route 26 all the way down to 70, to widen the through lanes by allowing the exit and entrance ramps to merge like they've done between Rosemont and 40.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
I think it's an important question, and it's one of the things that I've talked about in this campaign, which is this question of citizen engagement. We know what the voter turnout is likely to be on Election Day, and the biggest challenge that we have is that we all lead busy lives, and how do we figure out how to best take our talent and apply them in ways that are useful and important to the city of Frederick? And I can tell you, the job that we do as elected officials cannot be done without the engagement of residents all across the city, and it's a non-stop, never-ending effort. We have to continue to ask more. We have to ask better. We have to use innovation and technology to expand our use of our website and social media as a way to engage the community. There's all sorts of ways, through survey tools and just the technology that's out there, to go out into the communities and talk to people in a way that we never had the opportunity to do 10 or 20 or 50 years ago, certainly. And we have to never stop asking. We have to never become discouraged as public officials about whatever we might see. Everyone needs to be included in the conversation. We just have to keep asking.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I think Ms. Nash, you go first. Ms. Kazumchak, and then, was it Mr. Dacey? Ms. Nash.
So like the Aldermen said, I think it's certainly a conversation that we need to have. A couple leaders I want to recognize tonight, Dr. Shuck, who is in the room, and also Mike Cato, the gentleman that was in the article, bringing sort of to the issue the forefront and not letting the issue die. We have a long way to go. Certainly, the current representation that you see up here does not reflect our 30% minority community, so we need to be proactive and we need to reach out, because clearly, the conversation needs to go on. So be patient with us, and please come to us and keep it going.
Thank you. Ms. Kazumchak.
I think it's really, really sad that we're talking about groups like the Ku Klux Klan in this century, but it is a real issue. To me, this is an accessibility issue. All groups need to be heard. All groups need to, we need to visit with all groups. I spoke last night about how there are, there is one polling place on the west side of the city. All the rest of them are on the east side of the city. That's a problem that stops people from voting. We need to make sure we get to all groups of citizens to allow them to vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dacey.
Well, when I'm door knocking, I do see a lot of cynicism within the city. I mean, people, especially with what's going on in Washington these days, people look at me, they say, "Why do you want to be a politician?" And I think it's sad, and I think politics has devolved to a point where people are so partisan and they're so ideological that a lot of people don't want to get engaged. And I think that's something that we can change here in Frederick, and I think that's something that we should change. I think the next board should work with all people. I don't think that, you know, I have skills as a mediator, I'm a trained mediator, and I do see that what's going on in Washington should not be brought to Frederick, and unfortunately, some of it has trickled out.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Great. We now move on to Ms. Nash. Ms. Nash, it's interesting that Chief Dyne has joined us in the audience. Good to see you back from Washington, DC. Thank you for coming out. We're going to talk about public safety and our men and women in uniform. Tell us, how can we improve and bolster our police department to best support the men and women in the ranks?
Well, I want to first acknowledge Alderman Russell's leadership on this issue. Certainly, she's been a leader for us and will continue to be a leader for us communicating the needs of the police department. I want to sort of talk about how downtown has changed, and if you live downtown, you've seen it. When I was at Hood, I'll tell you, there really was, there was sort of one bar, and we went to Baltimore when we wanted to hang out, and that was not, we didn't go downtown. And that's a radical change. You know, if you go downtown now, it's like Mardi Gras. And, you know, our police levels have not changed, and so we need to look at that. We need to look at that, because it's an issue for all of us, even if you don't live downtown. Certainly, the increased police presence that is necessary on Friday and Saturday nights downtown. I live out on the west end. Those police officers have to focus down there, and they can't be everywhere at once. So this is an issue for all of us. I also want to talk about the police staff levels. I believe that as the city grows, it's sort of common sense, folks, we have to increase our police officers. So I look forward to working with Alderman Russell on that issue, and as well as Chief Dyne's predecessor, Chief Ledwell.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russell, 30 seconds.
It's pretty easy to support the police department. You just need to provide them the funding for the appropriate staffing, the equipment and the technology that they need, and that is something that I have fought for for the last four years. We've had some glitches in that, and we're starting to now catch up with fully staffing your police department so that they can be in the places they need to be, use data-driven policing to be in the places they need to be, and provide services to everyone across the city equally, and to the levels that they need is the most important thing. And supporting the funding and the staffing to do that is the way to support it.
Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to, ah, I'm sorry, Ms. Kell. Use your 30 seconds.
Public safety is very important. The police needs to be fully staffed, have the tools, the equipment to successfully patrol our communities. We also need to have more full patrol kiosks on the linear park, and also, if revenue allows, a police help station when the Walmart's built.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Kazumchak. Now we move on to, okay, so Hotel Conference Center, I'm going to ask it again. Is it worthwhile enough for the city to make an investment of taxpayer money? And, you know, where would you have it? Where do you want to put it?
I think the one thing that we're ignoring as we're talking about the Hotel Conference Center is preservation. We have a great downtown, and part of it is because we have a historic preservation commission that helps preserve our past. We've talked about it, ask a lot. As we move forward with this Hotel Conference Center, where to put it is not my choice. That's going to be done by the people who decide to develop. But I'll tell you that as we move forward with it, I will absolutely insist that we continue to preserve what we have downtown. That is of the utmost importance.
Very good. Well, we only have one 30 second left, and that's Mr. O'Connor's. Want to use it on this one? Have you used one? Yes, you did. You were the first one. I'm sorry. Someone's sitting at 30 seconds here. Ah, okay. Excellent. Well, moving on real quick, we'll move down the table to Mr. Imhoff. In the past, the notion of expanding the historic district has been floated, as has the idea of creating other unique areas of the city that are similarly protected. Is the present historic district and the preservation commission that oversees it doing an adequate job? Should we expand this concept into other areas?
I think the Historic Preservation Commission and the size of our historic district is adequate, and I think that the HPC is doing a reasonably good job. Are there room for improvement in both how the HPC works and what they are looking at? The answer is yes. And I think some attempts have been made to make the HPC more responsive to the realities of days of today, especially with the businesses that are in historic buildings. There are a number of things that could be done that aren't being done now that would allow businesses to expand within historic buildings and make it a little bit easier. Part of the problem is also our development regulations and the effects on downtown, especially with the stormwater management regulations from the state.
Mr. Schmidt, would you like to jump into the end?
So here's the two things you need to know about the HPC's effect on the city. First is a positive note, which is fairly recently, and this is something we deal as a contractor to the city, fairly recently, what they've said is they've allowed staff to handle a lot of the things that happen all the time. What's really good about that is now we know what the process is. A big problem with dealing with the city and doing any kind of construction downtown was that you didn't know what the process was going to be. It cost a certain amount of money. It could take a week, it could take longer. So they've taken a lot of things and make it so they don't have to go through the full commission. The second piece you need to know is, most of the time, these are state mandates, that when you designate a property as historic, it's not that our city is saying it has to be a certain way, it's that they're just simply saying it has to be that way because the state mandated it.
Very good. Ms. Daniels, your turn to take a question. How much should city government be involved in subsidizing what is traditionally the domain of private sector businesses? I think we know what we're talking about. Weinberg, Cluster Spires, golf course, we've got a couple of pools, Harry Grove Stadium.
Yeah, I think the city has a role in, we'll take up one at a time. The Weinberg is a center that's unique. The building's unique, and the service they provide is unique, and it provides a unique service to the city of Frederick and the vista. So I do think the city should have a role in that. We own the building, we do make a contribution. The golf course, you know, community golf courses are a great asset for people that are of moderate income, and most of us are of moderate income. But even at moderate income, it costs you 50 bucks to play a round of golf, and so it's not like people are getting something for free at the golf course. So I do think the city has a role. We own the golf course, we couldn't make any money selling it, it would be foolish. The golf course is actually an enterprise fund, and so it should at some point break even. I think that's projected to happen in a couple of years. The city investing money in private enterprise such as the hotel, I have an issue with if we were to get into that. I don't want to see the city getting into guaranteeing loans and/or tax rebates or tax forgiveness to attract a hotel. So, but I don't want to get into those things that we may be proffering at some point on the next board. So, yeah, I do think the city has a role in, and I would support it.
Very good. We move down to Mr. Dacey now. Let's ask a question about business, particularly what kind of businesses are going to play a part in Frederick's future? And what kind of businesses do you envision making of Frederick's future? And let's go a step further. How do you plan on attracting them here?
Well, one of the ideas that I've talked about since the beginning is Frederick's proximity to DC and Fort Dietrich makes it an ideal location for, you know, a federal agency. Prince George's County, actually, in competition with Northern Virginia right now for the FBI headquarters. I think it's a shame it's a missed opportunity for Frederick that we are not part of that conversation. We have a similar proximity to the district as where they're looking for these, for the FBI headquarters. Those are good federal jobs. I think this is part of a larger regional conversation with our delegation and our congressional senators and congressmen, but I think they could certainly help. But one underutilized resource that we haven't been able to tap into quite as much is Fort Dietrich, and I think Fort Dietrich offers an opportunity. There's a lot of scientists, a lot of good jobs, and there's a lot of knowledge there. And APG and Aberdeen has been able to capitalize on their proximity to Aberdeen Proving Ground, and I think we can use Fort Dietrich to try and capitalize and bring some of those high-tech jobs our way. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Cowell. You might have seen that story today, you contributed to it, I'm sure, the nonpartisan elections. Our Merrill County makes, seem called to be in favor of it. Would you agree? And if so, what else do you think can be done as well as that to encourage greater voter participation in the city?
Well, thank you to the Frederick's Post for actually giving us an opportunity to answer that publicly. When I first thought about this in July, my answer was a definite no, but the, my opinion's evolved over the last couple months chatting with residents, going door to door. I believe that if you're a city taxpayer, you should have the opportunity to vote in the primary election. So that being said, every person should have a chance to vote if you're unaffiliated, Democrat, or Republican. I also believe that we potentially need to discuss moving into an election year, but it's going to take possibly this board or the next board to make that happen.
Sweet. Thank you. Mr. Boeck. We've talked a little bit about helping police do their job. Now, I'm your attorney, and so I'm used to cameras everywhere. We've seen speed cameras springing up next to schools. We've also seen cameras going up at intersections to catch red light runners. Do you think the police department is going too far or should really pursue more greatly this type of technology to aid them in enforcement? I mean, for example, you know, surely Carroll Creek could do with a few cameras to help it to get crime.
I think when it comes to this larger issue about public safety and technology, you know, the first is that I'm not going to pretend to be, play a policeman on TV, or I'm not going to pretend to have public safety expertise. And so I think you have to follow the lead of who your chief of police is, with Chief Ledwell. But my understanding is that overall, I think that we can benefit from the use of technology. And so if the chief of police puts forward a plan that is based in sound metrics that shows how cameras could augment and help support safety, say, along Carroll Creek, and shows how that's had a positive demonstrative effect for other communities without being intrusive, because we need to be mindful of that, then that's something I think we need to be open to. And I think when it comes to these types of questions about policy decisions and where we should be and where we want to be and what programs or services we evaluate, that's a very important role for, I think, as an Alderman. The mayor's going to run day to day and be the strategic lead, but that type of question is exactly the type of question, I think, that as an Alderman, we should take a step back and say, "Is that the right direction? Do the facts support that? Does the data support that?" We want you to residents think and listen. Thank you.
Very good. That brings us to the end of the round. Please give them a round of applause. Moving on to closing statements, you get one minute, and we will start with Mr. Schmidt going first.
So again, thank you all for coming out for his post, FCC. So why vote for men? It's the question I'm trying to ask, what makes me different? So first, I'll say my years working in the city and with the city have prepared me for this job. My years with transportation services, I've helped make decisions that have affected the transportation infrastructure here. I understand how the city works. I don't need time to spin up to learn the ropes, so to speak. And I can immediately begin working on new, innovative, fresh ideas here in the city that can make this city efficient, effective, and sustainable. Second, I've spent time advocating for residents at City Hall, and I have experience because of being a contractor, bringing federal dollars, as I mentioned earlier, here into the community with effective communication across the city. We can build on the last four years, and we can create an even better four years looking forward. We need to protect our history, and we need to protect our past and this character we have, but we also need to face forward. So with my leadership, I believe that I can help lead that forward with my experience. So November 5th, please vote, and vote Schmidt.
Very good. Ms. Russell.
I hope you'll all forgive me for my little brain cramp earlier. Even a person who does this a lot sometimes gets stuck on a thought. I believe that in order to be a good public servant, just what I think an elected official ought to be, you need to be accessible, you need to be responsive, you need to be involved. I've worked very hard for the last four years to try and do that. I hope that I've lived up to that. What I'd like to urge you to do now is to vote. When the election comes around on November 5th, please vote. Please tell your friends to vote. Please tell everybody you know that's a city resident to get out and vote. We had abysmal turnout at the primary, and it's so important in an election like this at your local level that you play a role in it. The margins between the candidates, those that get through and those that don't, is so small. Every vote really is critical. So my last words to you are, please, November 5th, get out and vote and take somebody with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Connor.
I'm extraordinarily proud of the work that this Board of Aldermen has done over the last four years. I think we've worked collaboratively. We have not always agreed, but I don't think that's what we get elected to do. I think we get elected to move things forward, and I think we've been effective in moving a number of things forward. Not all of it is big stuff either. We spend a lot of time looking at the policies and procedures of the city of Frederick and undergoing a comprehensive rewrite. It's not front-page stuff, but it's important because it affects the employees who work for us every day. I want to continue to provide the kind of thoughtful, effective leadership that I think I've demonstrated over the last four years. I think I possess the knowledge. Now I possess an even greater thing, the experience of having done the job for four years. I'm Michael O'Connor. I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nash.
In 1945, my grandfather was drafted, and he then went on to serve several tours in Korea, and then he went on to raise me years later. And tonight is his birthday, and he's here celebrating with us. And I bring that to you because to know him is to know me, and, you know, I was fortunate, I was blessed, as I said earlier. I didn't know at the time, but being part of, being raised by that greatest generation inspired in me a calling, a calling to serve and a calling and a passion to represent those who are not represented. So I bring sincerity, I bring a passion, and certainly, I will tell you that I won't be an expert in everything that I do, and I certainly won't know everything, but I care enough about these issues and I care enough about our city to learn and to be inspired by others around me. So as Alderman Russell said, please vote on November 5th. Please consider me. I am Katie Nash. My website is nashforfrederick.com. Please contact me, ask me any questions that you have, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you for your service. We're here in the round. All right, moving on swiftly, Ms. Kazumchak.
Thank you. Over 20 years ago, I read a quote that has defined my life since then. You see it on my literature, it's something I say all the time. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Since reading that quote, I've expanded my advocacy from schools and transportation to neighborhoods, preservation, accessibility, and city services. I am passionate about this city. I'm passionate about neighborhoods and about fairness. I'm passionate about doing what's right and protecting individuals. I am proud of my past service, and I appreciate every person sitting up here. I know what it is to give part of your life to serve others, and I appreciate your willingness to do that. I've been attending mayor and board workshops and voting meetings since announcing my intentions to run. I'm ready to hit the ground running, and I'd love the ability to serve you again. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you all for not just being spectators. Please vote. Donna Kazemchak, November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Imhoff.
Again, thank you for coming out and participating in one of the true pleasures that we have as American citizens, something I volunteered for a long time ago, to serve this country and protect that right. And I hope that more people will learn to exercise that right of voting. In high school life, I came into community service by participating with the Mary Dobkin Foundation in East Baltimore. From that time on, I have every year given of my time and talents to some nonprofit or other organization or to government in a variety of capacities. I've learned a lot of things. Do I know everything? No. I'm willing to learn, and I want to serve and be able to serve you as a member of the next Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very much. Ms. Daniels.
Thank you, Cliff. I'd like to thank the audience for investing your time this evening to come out and learn more about the candidates and the issues. You know, the next administration will be dealing with issues that will define the direction of the city for the foreseeable future. Issues like the Hargit Farm, what to do with it, how to best deal with that financial burden it creates. Flated properties, implementing those tools we need to move those properties back to a productive status. Airport runway extensions, our pensions and our OPEs, our Hotel Conference Center and what role the city should play, if any, in that. Inequality in our neighborhoods. The Board of Ald, and the Board of Aldermen you elect will be required to address those complex issues and more. Issues that often don't have an easy answer. I have experience in dealing with complex issues. I understand the processes of our city government. I'm John Daniels, and I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dacey.
It's important to pick the right mix of candidates for the board.